Welcome to the Oklahoma City Council Candidate Forum for Ward 1. My name is Robin Jones and I'm the Director of Oklahoma City's West 10 District. Thank you to our other hosts and sponsors, Jill McCartney and her team at Northwest Oklahoma City Chamber, Reaching Our City, which is the location we are at currently, and Jason Rowinski's team, and of course, the West 10 District. This has all come together somewhat amazingly, and we are excited that you're joining us or viewing this at a later date. We do not have a typical in-person public audience. We have a handful of people in the audience, but our primary focus -- I should probably take that off, sorry. Our primary focus are the candidates. Everyone in our city watching this will have the privilege and the responsibility to vote as an informed voter, not just voting, but as an informed voter on Tuesday, February 9th. We hope you will use this time to provide at least one source of information and ask that you share this link with others. All candidates were invited, but Megan Scott, who chose not to attend due to COVID concerns, will not be participating this morning. Moderating the forum will be Oklahoma City Broadcast Journalists, and you'll probably recognize the names. They're both Oklahoma Journalism Hall of Fame members. Billy Rodley, who you will probably be familiar with from several places, but mostly KTOK and OETA. And then Jim Palmer, who has served as an anchor reporter, news director, and probably a lot of other things I don't know in media outlets in Oklahoma City. I appreciate them moderating. Very excited about you moderating, and I'm turning it over to you.
Okay, great. First of all, thanks to the candidates for stepping up and getting engaged in your city. This is wonderful to have this many people who want to be involved. Jim Palmer is going to ask you to introduce yourself.
Okay. Thank you once again for participating in Ward 1 Oklahoma City Council Forum, and I appreciate you being here today very much. We're going to alternate the questions, and we will go from left to right to begin with.
Our left, your --
Our left, your right.
Then we'll reverse order.
We'll go this way initially. The first question we have, and this is for Richard Buchanan.
Well, it's not the first question.
Introduce.
Oh, I'm sorry, really. It's not the first question. We do need to know something about you, so introduce yourself.
Sixty-second opening statement.
You have sixty seconds to do that. Make any open statement, introduce yourself.
I'm Richard Buchanan. I have lived in this area since the 1960s. I'm married, I have five children, two grandchildren. I attended Putnam City Schools, graduated from Putnam City West High School, was recruited by the University of Oklahoma for the Leadership Class in 1975. And while I was there at the college, I started my first company. And my company is colorcraft painting. Our company's completed over 8,000 new homes during its existence and has over $2 million in revenues a year. I own other companies. I was in Leadership Oklahoma City, Class 8, and I'm an active member of Council Road Baptist Church for the last 50 years. And my motivation for running is pretty much, I've said this before, is Philippians 2, 3, and 4. Do nothing from selfish or empty conceit, but with humility of mind, let each of us regard one another as more important than himself. Do not only look out for your own personal interests, but look out for the interest of others.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that, and being on time.
Thanks.
Next, we have Bill Fleming. Bill, would you like to introduce yourself? You have 60 seconds.
Yes, thank you. First, I want to thank the West 10 District and Northwest Chamber Commerce for sponsoring this morning. We all appreciate that. I'm married. I've been married, and my wife, Sherri, is here with me this morning for 56 years. We have two children. I have a small business. I'm an independent contractor. I chaired the first MAPS-3 Wellness Center, and we were able to get that up and running just before COVID hit. We had 6,900 members in that facility. It was a great experience. I've seen Oklahoma City during some really difficult times. Sherri and I moved back here just right after the Penn Square crisis, and people were leaving, jobs were nonexistent, property values were plummeting, and it was a bad time. We really had a black eye then. And now things are a lot different. We're seeing Oklahoma City grow. There's a lot of opportunity here. Amazing things are happening, but we're also facing this COVID crisis, a lot of other problems in our city. And I think my conservative Christian values and my business experience and the things that I've done will help me very much in representing Oklahoma City well.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you very much. Next candidate to introduce himself is Joshua DeBolt.
Yep, good morning. First of all, we also thank, you know, the Northwest Chamber, ROC, and West 10 for putting this event on today, as well as the other candidates on being here. I'm not a native to Oklahoma. I did move here, would have been about 11 years ago now, where I met my wife. We have two beautiful little girls. I'm also a local business owner. And so, small business is a big reason why I decided to run. I feel like it's a responsibility of a citizen when they see that leadership within their community are not doing the job that they have been elected to do, that you need to step up and do something. It's easy to armchair quarterback decisions that people are making. It's another thing to step up and say, "I'm going to do something about it." So, running for City Council is not a want. It is what I feel is a responsibility as an Oklahoman and as an American.
Thank you very much, Joshua. I appreciate that. And speaking of quarterbacks, we have one from Oklahoma who's going to participate in the big game this afternoon.
No, it's tomorrow.
Oh, it's tomorrow. Okay, this weekend.
Whatever.
Baker Mayfield is who I was talking about. Anyway, I hope I pronounced your name correctly.
Nanadonqua.
Nanadonqua, okay. Thank you very much for making that clear. And it's your turn to introduce yourself, Nana.
All right, well, again, my name is Nanadonqua, and I'm the son of this city. I was born in 1981, Presbyterian Hospital. I attended K through 12 in the Putnam City School District. Now, I'm an attorney, a father, and a husband, raising my own family on the South Side of Ward 1. And I'm running because I believe that public service is the best way to give back to a city that's given so much to me. But I also believe that my diverse background in the field of law, healthcare, business, and banking make me uniquely qualified and the best candidate to address the issues our city faces now and in the days to come. My platform, of course, consists of public safety, economic development, and it calls for increase in sidewalks, bus stops, and biking lanes. And then also, my platform will consist of a devotion to, a dedication to diversity and the diversity and equality that make our city great. And I just ask you to vote for me on February 9th. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your introduction. Next, we have Susan Perisi. And Susan, you have 60 seconds to introduce yourself.
Good morning. I'm Susan Perisi, Lieutenant Colonel, U.S. Air Force retired. I have five amazing daughters, and I have lived in Oklahoma since 1971. I come uniquely equipped with 30 years of military and professional service. I've been the chief nurse of three medical squadrons, and I served with the Oklahoma Army National Guard as their safety and occupational health nurse, working with soldiers and managing an immense budget. I retired from the military in March of 2011. I hold a degree in nursing, biology, and a graduate degree from the University of the Air Force. My priorities for running are my motivation. I have on my list homelessness, domestic violence, and to increase funding not only for police, but for mental health professionals and all first responders.
Very good timing, Susan. Thank you. Okay, next, we have Jay Sherrill. And Jay, you want to introduce yourself to us, please?
Sure. My name is Jay Sherrill. I was born and raised in Ward 1 in Oklahoma City. My wife, Jessica, and I both graduated from Putnam City Schools. We have two kids who are third-generation Putnam City students, and for the last six years, I've currently served on the Board of Education for Putnam City. In addition to that, the last 16 years, I've worked in healthcare with a large company, Quest Diagnostics, delivering laboratory services to hospital systems around the United States. We manage about $600 million a year in revenue. For me, I'm running because I was encouraged by a good mentor of mine, former Mayor Mick Cornet, who agreed to support, endorse me, and be the chairman of my campaign. My priorities, if elected as your next council member, will be to focus on public safety, improvement of city streets and infrastructure, keeping the promises of MAPS-4, making sure those projects are delivered on time and on budget. And then obviously, I want to build relationships with our community, with our neighborhood associations, and with our small businesses so that they have a voice down at City Hall. You can learn more about me if you go to jforokc.com, and I appreciate your vote on February 9th.
Thank you very much, Jay.
Thank you.
And next is Shay Varnell. And Shay, you want to introduce yourself?
Yes, I would. Thank you very much. My name is Shay Varnell. I'm a 45-year-old small business owner here in Oklahoma City. I'm married to a former school teacher, and I have two beautiful daughters that attend Bethany Public Schools. I've lived in Oklahoma City my entire life, including Ward 1, since 1983. I was president of my homeowners association for almost 10 years, where I first got to meet our current City Council member, James Greiner. He would come speak at our annual meetings every year, and through that relationship, he called me a couple of years ago and asked if I would be interested in running or being on the Traffic and Transportation Commission. Of course, I've wanted to serve the City of Oklahoma City, so about a week later, Mayor Holt appointed me to the Traffic Commission. Through that Traffic Commission, I got to know the inner workings and the processes of Oklahoma City. And when Councilman Greiner decided he wasn't going to run, I was approached by several city leaders and elected officials about taking over his spot. And through those discussions, I knew I was the right guy, and that's why I decided to run.
Okay. Thank you very much, Shay. I appreciate it. And last but not least certainly, Bradley Carter is here. Bradley, you want to introduce yourself?
My name is Bradley Carter. I have lived in Oklahoma for more than 35 years now. I was born in Florida, was an Air Force Brad until we came back home. I graduated from Bethany High School. I decided to raise my family here. We live in Ward 1 out in Canadian County. And it was actually when the sitting Councilman, James Greiner, decided not to run, that I was actually approached by a number of our neighbors and constituents and considered to do so. Through much prayer, my wife and I decided this was the route we needed to go, and it's actually the endorsement of all of our neighbors and the people that live in Ward 1 that have really kind of motivated us to continue to do so. I own a small business. It's a coffee roasting and distribution company named Crowns for Compassion, and that has uniquely qualified me to meet a number of people across many different backgrounds and situations and learn a lot of the different aspects of what we need to face and the different issues that we need to address here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, I'm Billy Rodley. I'll be asking the first question. Some of you have addressed this issue already in your opening statements, but we'll start with Bill Fleming, and the question is, what do you feel are the two most important issues the Oklahoma City Council should address? You have 60 seconds.
Well, first thing, due to the rapid growth and everything that we're experiencing in that area, I think infrastructure has to be a top priority. We have to get our roads and our streets, sewers, and also police, fire, and every other aspect of infrastructure up to speed to accommodate that growth. Second, I think my priority is to make sure that the citizens of Oklahoma City are well-informed, that they get engaged. I was thinking the other day, what an amazing thing it could be if we could get everyone involved in what we could accomplish, if we could just get people plugged in and work together.
All right. Thank you. Joshua DeBolt, same question, 60 seconds. Two most important issues for the City Council.
Yeah, thank you. So, I come from a law enforcement family. My father is retired 22 years as a chief of police, and so, law enforcement to me is something that is extremely important. I have a, you know, coming from a law enforcement family, I have a great understanding of that behind the badge and understanding what those law enforcement officers go through. And so, when I see sitting City Council members who are actively calling for, you know, the defunding and divesting of our Oklahoma City Police Department, that's something that troubles me, and it's something that I believe as a voice and an advocate on the City Council that I can speak for what I believe is the opinion of most Oklahomans, which are that not only should we not be looking at defunding our law enforcement, but we should be looking at ways that we can fund them better for better equipment, better training, and to keep Oklahomans safe. Additionally, I would be looking at the homeless issues, specifically our veteran population that is homeless. Even one veteran is far too many to be homeless in Oklahoma City.
Thank you. Nanadonqua, also 60 seconds. The two most important issues facing Oklahoma City Council.
I think first, the economic development, I think, to what we've gone through with COVID-19, how it's impacted our local economy and our small businesses. I hate that. It's something I believe I need to do going forward for the City Council. I also believe that that might support Oklahoma City.
Test.
To develop it and if possible, development of affordable housing for our most vulnerable citizens. I also think the next thing would be infrastructure. I think that's important. I know on my side, I live on the South Side of Ward 1, right here, and I know that we need more sidewalks, bus stops, and we need more, I guess, access to the rest of the city. So, I see people who go uphill in a wheelchair at this traffic, and so, that makes it very hard for me to see whenever I'm like, we need some more sidewalks, but we have on our side, we have sidewalks that go to a bus stop, and then it just stops. So, I guess mobility would be the second thing.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Susan, 60 seconds. Two main issues for Oklahoma City Council.
Very concerned with homelessness. I think if we could address homelessness, we would address food insecurity. We also would address crime, drug abuse. We also need to have an early domestic violence warning system. I would very much like to see that people who have, women, men, who have ever been a victim of violence, to be able to have an early warning system in their home. I feel we could partner with ADT or Vivint and get an early warning system. And then I believe that we also need to increase our budget, not only for our police, but for our first responders and to increase mental health workers so that they can work with victims of violence and address homelessness.
All right. Susan, thank you. Jay Sherrill, same question, 60 seconds. Two issues.
Yeah, so I addressed a little bit of this in my initial opening statement, and I think it's similar to a lot of our other candidates. So, public safety obviously is number one, and making sure our first responders get the resources that they need, because when there's an emergency and you have to pick up the phone and call, every second matters. I think everybody has good ideas, but I'd have to say another priority would be economic development and job growth. If we look at how Oklahoma City gains revenue, it's primarily through sales tax. So, all these programs are fantastic, but unless we continue job growth and economic development, there's not going to be the resources to do these things. So, for me, it would be truly to focus on, once again, public safety, improving our infrastructure, and working with businesses to promote economic development and job growth.
Right. Thank you. Shay, same question, 60 seconds. Two issues for Oklahoma City.
First responders first. We have to take care, fund, and give the support to the people we count on most when we dial 911. That is not being done in a proper manner sometimes in our city, and that's what I'm going to prioritize first. Second is MAPS-4. The city has given us a billion-dollar promise that we need to deliver on a City Councilman. There's a lot of projects that we want to make sure they're on time, on budget, and completed properly.
Okay. Thank you. Bradley Carter, as opposed to Carter Bradley, a world-famous journalist and Capitol reporter for many years. Bradley Carter, 60 seconds. Two issues, please.
I would say our infrastructure is a huge focus of mine on the first one. Definitely our roads, the access to what we need to do with that. We have a lot of companies that are looking to bring their business and, you know, place their companies here without the proper roads, the infrastructure, and what we need to be able to access those, we're not going to be able to attract what we need to, to keep jobs open or create job growth. The aspect of homelessness and the fighting every week that we have to combat this, to feed people, to find portable housing, is going to be my second one to really, you know, kind of nip in the bud. All of this circles around with our first responders and making sure that we do have the proper funding and everything that they need to secure them and to make sure that they can do their job properly.
Thank you. And first is last this time, Richard Buchanan, two issues, 60 seconds.
All right. I think the vote of assistance with things that are going on with COVID, I know a small business is hurting. I know my daughter has three businesses downtown. She pays $5,000 a month for each of them, and there's no way to survive with what's going on. And I'm pretty sure that as strong as the United States is in Oklahoma, that our economy is going to come back strong once we get past this. So, I think anything we can do to assist the citizens, as well as the small business, needs to be a concern of ours. The other is infrastructure. For the last year, this last year and this coming year are going to be two of the best years for climate change and three years to come. We're going to get last year a shorter development, and that has to do with infrastructure. So, along with the infrastructure and pushing the MAPS, the road, which is part of infrastructure and what have you, these are the things I see.
Thank you. Jim Palmer, question two.
All right, question number two, and let's start over here on the right.
Our right.
My right, with Bradley Carter. Oklahoma's COVID rates are currently among the highest in the country, with hospitals and medical teams overwhelmed. What do you think of Oklahoma City's municipal leadership on addressing the pandemic, and what approach would you support?
You know, I support the people and their freedoms. I don't know that it's really in our realm of authority to really address this as much as we have, and I believe that we need to trust the people. It's our constitutional rights to be able to have that. People want to do the right thing, but we also need to keep our businesses open. People need to be able to move. We've seen many different factors between suicides, between alcoholism, spousal abuse, child abuse, that have also been come very high due to this, right? So, I think there's a number of things besides just the COVID aspect that we need to really look into and investigate to figure out what that's going to be.
Okay. Thank you, Bradley. Let's go to Shay. Shay Varnell. Just briefly, let me repeat. Oklahoma's COVID rates among the highest in the country, with hospitals and medical teams overwhelmed. What do you think of Oklahoma City's municipal leadership on addressing the pandemic, and what approach would you support?
I'm going to applaud Mayor Holt's communication to the people of Oklahoma City. He does a very good job telling what the city is doing. I am going to say that masks do work, but also, when I take seat on the City Council, I will not support a mask mandate for the City of Oklahoma City. I don't like it taking away, telling us what to do and when to do it and where to do it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Jay?
Yeah, you know, I work in healthcare. I work with hospital systems. I've seen the impact in front lines, and I, like a lot of other people, have had direct family members impacted by COVID. It's real. It's important. It's an issue that we need to tackle head-on, right? It's not going to get, it's going to get worse probably before it gets better. So, for me, I think that we could have handled this a lot better in the city and in the state by educating the individuals, educating the people, to the point where we might not have had to have a mask mandate. Unfortunately, it didn't come to that. I'd have to say that I don't love the idea of the city telling us what to do, but I would have likely supported a mask mandate and would probably continue to do so until it improves or gets better.
Okay. Thank you, Jay. Let's go to Susan, Lieutenant Colonel.
Yes, sir. Well, being a registered nurse, I am passionate that we do need mask mandates. This disease is airborne, and it is captured in droplets, and it is spread. And when we have inconsistency and misinformation and people who want to have their rights over other people's rights, it's not going to cure this disease. We need to have consistent information. If everybody would wear the mask, do the thing, and we need to have the vaccinations. I went to McAllister last week, and it was an amazing situation how they had it set up and how they delivered the vaccine. We need to have a, we could use our Army National Guard to assist in getting this vaccine done. Masks, vaccines, hand washing, education.
Okay. Thank you, Susan. Let me repeat. What do you think of Oklahoma City's municipal leadership on addressing the pandemic, and what approach would you support? Nana?
Yes, I am totally in support of the city's mask mandate. I have no issues with that, so that's the approach I would support. I worked in healthcare for almost a decade as a surgical tech. My job was to keep the sterile field, or keep the surgical site sterile, so I understand how important it is to have the proper things in place, like a mask to prevent anything coming onto my face, and also to prevent any kind of disease from spreading or infecting the site. So, it's important to me to wear a mask. I also think that's very important to our economy. I think in order for our economy to really bounce back, we have to have a mask mandate in place in order to keep our businesses open during this pandemic. And then also, mask mandate helps mitigate the burden that's placed on our medical facilities and our healthcare workers by reducing the amount of people who are hospitalized, and keeping that open for those who may need it, other than a cancer patient or other than somebody who's caught COVID.
Okay. Thank you, Nana. Joshua, you're next.
Thank you, Jim. So, I believe that Oklahomans are uniquely able to and want to take care of other Oklahomans, want to see other Oklahomans safe. I absolutely would not support and do not support a mask mandate. I don't believe that whether it is local government, state government, or federal government should have the right to tell citizens whether or not to wear a mask. I believe that the citizens of Oklahoma are smart enough to make those decisions when necessary for themselves. I believe we've had a large failure within COVID is within our school system. As a father, the detrimental effects that kids are experiencing by having not been in school, some now Tulsa, for example, will be up over a year not being there. I think those effects, we don't even know what the long-term effects of that will be , but I believe that we can take care of each other.
Okay. Thank you, Joshua. Bill Fleming, municipal leadership on addressing the pandemic, and what approach would you support?
Well, first, I would like to just point out that we're dealing with something we've never dealt with before, and every leader, I think, seeks to do the best thing. And obviously, there'll be some mistakes made when they make those choices, but overall, I would applaud our leadership. I think they've done well. I am adamantly opposed to shutting down our economy. I think you do harm more harm than you do good, and I, from personal experience at the Wellness Center, I know what interaction for people means. And I think the ability to be able to get out and have people interact and get out of their homes so they're not depressed and having other issues is really important. The key to that is to get the vaccinations done. Municipal leaders need to support that and encourage that as much as possible. We have to do everything we can to see that people are vaccinated and then well-educated so that they do have the choice to make the right choices and decisions.
Okay. Thank you. And Richard Buchanan?
Yeah, I think the mayor's been forthcoming. I think he's been informative, and I think he's been proactive in this, first of all, this. I agree with the mask mandate for a period of time, but not permanent. I think there's more positives than negatives associated with that. But as a city, I think that we need to be more involved and more forceful through the state and the federal, find out where our vaccines are, and be more involved, finding out why we're not receiving them, and be more demanding of that.
Okay. Thank you, Richard. You want me to do Q3?
Nope, I'll do it.
Okay.
All right.
This will be fun.
This is going to be like a lightning round. I want you all to think about your past involvement with Oklahoma City Municipal Government. We'll ask a few questions, and if you wish to reply, you can raise that yellow card you were given, and we'll call on you or not call on you, depending. The first question, have you voted in past municipal elections?
Raise your card.
Raise your card if you have.
Everybody has, so no questions.
No?
No? Joshua?
You have not. Okay. Then I am calling on those who don't raise. What happened? Why not vote?
You know, as I said before, to some degrees, that, you know, I grew up in a, you know, small rural community, and, you know, something I always grew up learning was that, you know, regardless of who is any kind of governmental seat, is that, you know, you learn how to take care of yourself, take care of your friends, your family, volunteer and help those where you can. I simply didn't get involved in -- I simply didn't get involved in, you know, those elections to a certain degree because it wasn't a priority for me at the time. I felt like now I have an obligation and a responsibility to do so.
We'll assume that you're going to vote February 9th. You're it, okay. Second question, again, thinking about your past involvement in city municipal government. Have any of you attended an Oklahoma City Council meeting in person?
Okay, see, two, two.
So Nana and Susan and Bradley have not, okay.
Why not?
Why have you not attended? 30 seconds, I'm sorry.
Well, I've not attended. I believe that the city council meeting was happening on Tuesday is correct, yeah. So I've spent most of my life working on Zoom. It's hard to take off and to, from classes and things like that to, in order to meet, to go to those meetings. However, I have had interactions with my city council person. So I've had time to be able to talk with them outside of the meeting.
Susan, Lieutenant Colonel?
Having been in the military, working full-time, having a large family and a lot of military obligations, it has been a time constraint, not due to lack of interest, and I would follow up via the internet afterwards, but in person, I have not been able to do it because of other commitments.
And then, what was it, Bradley?
Bradley.
I've been growing a business for the last 11 years, and started it off with just myself, and have been really trying to kind of keep that going, and that takes a lot of your time and a lot of your focus. Since the end of 2019, early 2020, I've been able to follow up with Zoom and watch a lot of the meetings, but I have not been able to attend them in person.
Okay. Again, all these answers, 30 seconds. Any of you served on any city commission, task forces, or boards?
I mean, is it school board? Does that count? I mean, it's not a city.
City, municipal?
Municipal, it is.
Okay. Shay, can you take 30 seconds, say where have you served?
Sure. I currently serve as the Ward One representative on the Traffic and Transportation Commission. I was appointed almost two years ago. It's been a great insight where I've learned about city government, how it really works. It's, I'm proud to know that I'm the only one up here that's done that, so I think I have a better understanding of what's going to be expected when we come, we take up the city.
And Jay, 30 seconds.
I am a local, I am a local elected official. It's about as local as it gets. I represent our, represent our families in Putnam City and our students and our kids. I've served on the Board of Education for six years. I've made tough decisions. I've worked with other board members and our administrative teams to ensure that we're delivering high-quality service and education to the students. Again, I've served and I appreciate serving, and I look forward to continuing to do so.
Okay. Jim Palmer?
All right, I think we're going to question number four, and these are 30, this is the 30-second question.
Answer.
Answer, answer. Sometimes I can make a question 30 seconds, too. Where do we want to start? Let's see, we started back over here. Let's go back.
Well, it says on question four, you start with number seven.
Okay.
And that's Shay.
Yeah. Okay. Shay? Let me get this right. What is your idea of how much time you'll spend monthly as a council member, and what kind of constituent engagement should we expect?
I own my own small business. I have two wonderful business partners that have allowed me to step away to campaign, and they know when I win the seat, they're going to allow me to do whatever I need to do, what's best for Oklahoma City. I expect to spend a lot of time. It's not just a meeting every other Tuesday for a couple hours. I'm going to be expected to show up at homeowners association meetings, local events held by like West 10 with Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce, and I will do that as much as I can, which will be a lot.
Okay, thank you, Shay.
It'd be Jay, then.
Let's go to Jay. I'll repeat, what's your idea of how much time you'll spend monthly as a council member, and what kind of constituent engagement should we expect?
Right. Well, our residents of Oklahoma City, they deserve somebody who will commit to them. I've proven to do that. I'm currently a local elected official on the Board of Education. I will continue, you know, if elected to the city council, I'd have to give that up. But I'm dedicated to commit my time to make sure that we have a voice, that I'm out meeting people, and, and I'm participating, whether it's in neighborhood associations, whether it's community meetings. I think we need somebody who has the ability to dedicate the time, and I've done so for the last six years, and will continue to do so.
Thank you, Jay. Susan?
Well, being a retired person, I have a lot of freedom to be able to devote extra time to this cause. I believe it's important. I want to engage Ward One. I want my neighbors to know that I hear them, that I see them, and I will be available whenever I am needed.
Okay.
Yes.
Now, let's go to Nana.
Yes. I expect to spend as much time as possible. I want to be able to engage with constituents. A lot of these people, you know, would have voted for me, they would have supported me, or possibly donated to my campaign. So I want to make sure that I give back what they've given me. And if they were able to get me the seat on Ward One, then I definitely want to be able to give them my ear and be able to help them. It's one of the reasons why I bring this, because I wanted somebody to talk to. And so I'm glad that I could be that for someone else.
Thank you, Nana. Joshua, you're next.
Yeah, thank you, Jim. As a, you know, as a father of twin five-year-old girls, as a business owner, I've been able to find ways to squeeze every second out of every hour of every day, as well as, you know, just having an understanding of what it really takes to get things accomplished. Not only am I going to intend to be there when I'm needed, but I'm going to be there whether somebody wants me there or not, because I intend to be involved. I have a great business partner, my brother, who has allowed me to take the time to do this. I have a great staff who can run my company while I'm gone.
Thank you. Bill Fleming?
This is not a part-time job. It's virtually a full-time job. And having been heavily involved with the M.A.T.S. Three First Wellness Center, I've spent hundreds of hours the last few years attending committee meetings, city council meetings, and other types of meetings. And so I know what, what it takes in order to get in and spend the time to do that. I have a support system that will allow me to devote whatever time I need to, to get the job done.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Richard?
I believe it's a full-time job. I'm fortunate that I have, having my children all grown, that I have a company that's self-sufficient. I don't have to be there the majority of the time. I have helped enough council people over the last 40 years to know that, that it takes a lot of work. And if we're going to get things done, it's going to take digging in and getting right into it, so.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to.
Nope, you've got Bradley Carter.
Oh, Bradley, did I forget you?
Yes, you did.
I'm sorry. Let me quickly repeat the.
How much time?
Yeah, how much time you'll be spending monthly as a council member, and what kind of constituent engagement should we expect?
I'm going to take as much time as I need. We already are embedded into the homeless. We feed them weekly. We have recovery houses, so we know about substance abuse. We're something that we're already heavily involved in, and I plan on taking that to it. So we already know how much time that we're going to need. Now I get to talk about it at these city council meetings from a firsthand experience. Again, as much time as needed, we'll use it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, the next question, you have 60-second answers, and this could be a bit of a bomb. We'll be starting with Joshua and going that way this time. The Oklahoma City Council recently voted to hire the national consulting firm 21 CP Solutions to transform the delivery of public safety services. What is your view of this approach to addressing the issues in our city? Are you aware of the 21 CP?
I'm not.
National organization? It's, they're a consulting organization to help the police department task force.
Yeah, I mean, I would say that, you know, while, while I would want to take a deeper look, obviously, into, you know, their background and what they intend to do, I think it's always a good idea, you know, to utilize any resources we can in order to, especially that would help our law enforcement to do a better job. You know, once again, I think that goes back into, not only should we not be looking at decreasing funding, but we should be looking at increasing funding for law enforcement in order to provide better equipment, provide better training, in order to do a better job for our citizens, and to make our community safer. So if the organization is something that, you know, has a good track record in doing that, and helping law enforcement to do a better job for our citizens, then it's something I would support. Once again, before I can, you know, fully put my support behind that, it's something I would want to take a deeper look into.
Okay. Nana, can you address the hiring of 21 CP Solutions?
Yes, I'm actually in the same situation as Josh. I'm not asking earlier, but I will say this, I will have to look into it before I give any kind of committed answer. But if it is, if they are involved to where they help make citizens feel as it's a police department is, because they're protecting service and to help them and to be there when, when, yes, I mean, I would be supportive of that. However, it's that, it is interesting that we have a third party working with the police. So I'd have to know how that, how that relationship actually, actually is supposed to, supposed to work, so.
Okay. I believe it was $175,000, was that the amount for the?
But it's basically about community policing.
Community.
That, that should all.
Yeah, 21 community policing, CP. And I think it was about $175,000 that they've, will hire this company. Susan, any thoughts on that?
That's a big, that's a large amount of money. I would want to know what model are they using? What are they using, Chicago? Are they using St. Louis, San Francisco? What model are they using to assist us? Who's going to be on, within this group? How many people are involved? There's a lot yet to learn, but I would be interested in accountability for the money. I'd be interested in the model that they are using and how they plan to move forward. And I'd like to know their goals and what they aspire, and who they're bringing in to help consult with us.
Okay, Jay, I don't know if you're familiar with this community policing.
Sure.
Organization. It's nationwide, but not in every city.
No, 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 I understand. And they're probably trying to look at best practices, and that's important. But again, we have to be accountable to taxpayers for the money spent. I think, you know, former Mayor Mick Cornet and past city councils have used, have done a really good job at looking at other cities and looking at best practices and bringing those and adapting them to Oklahoma. You don't always need to pay an outside organization and send taxpayers money for them to give you a report this big that only provides common sense, common sense solutions. So honestly, I mean, I think that I'd have to take a critical look at that contract, make sure that every dollar that's being spent is returning value back to the citizens of Oklahoma City. And again, is it worthwhile to actually spend that? Can we do that on our own, or look to other cities and provide best practices back to our citizens?
Okay, thank you. Shay, 60 seconds. What do you think about hiring an outside consulting firm?
Well, I'm very excited about the police task force. I think there are changes that need to be made in our police department. And if we're going to national view to help us make those decisions or make those recommendations, I encourage that. I don't know enough about the 21 CP program to make a definitive stance on it, but I would like to see on what they tend to provide, the models they tend to use, to help us make the best decisions for the citizens of Oklahoma City.
Okay, Bradley?
This is the first I've heard of it, so I can't really speak to it. They've already, obviously, signed the contract and brought them in, so there's not a whole lot that we can say about that part of it. I am interested in seeing kind of their, you know, the outcome that they come to and what our ROI is going to be for the city and for our, for our citizens. Other than that, I'm going to have to hold back until we figure out more.
You're not alone in this. I mean, a lot of people. And the vote was just taken last month, at the end of December, that the presentation was made. And I will say, it was a split council vote. Richard Buchanan, anything to say about a police, a consulting firm?
Sure. I think if the company has a good track record and it has good results, then I think it's a good thing. I think we have a lot of old policies that are no longer, they're all out of the, all out of date. I support the police, but I don't think it takes five guns to take one guy with a knife down. And I am appalled watching on TV across the United States how easily our citizens can be shot down.
Okay. And Bill Fleming?
I'm not familiar with the mandate that was given to them and what the expectations are. Consulting firms can add value. They can do a good job and give you ideas you hadn't perhaps explored before. Having said that, I would be adamantly opposed to anything that dilutes our police force in any way. Those men and women put their life on the line all the time. I highly support them, and I would just want to make sure that any recommendations that came back allowed them to do their job in the best way possible.
Okay, thank you. Question six.
Okay, question number six. Ward One covers an interesting swath of Northwest Oklahoma City. It shares borders with Piedmont, Yukon, Bethany, and War Acres. What's the role of this council person in fostering collaboration with these municipal neighbors? Let's start with Jay.
Sure. I mean, I think it's, I think it's critical. A lot of people who live in Ward One identify with other municipalities. They send their kids to Yukon Public Schools, Piedmont Public Schools, Bethany Public Schools. They go and shop in those communities, but they live and their services that are provided are in Ward One and are by Oklahoma City. So we need a council member who will go out and build relationships with those other municipalities. I've done so. I mean, I've met with the Yukon mayor, I've met with Yukon City Council members, I've met with other city council members, and through my experience in the Board of Education, I've worked with other parties to make sure that we get projects done. So when we go to look to page streets, it'll be a lot easier for lining up resources with our other municipalities to help work and coordinate together to complete those projects. So I'm committed to understanding that it's not just about Oklahoma City, but we have to critically build those relationships with the other municipalities to make sure that we're working for all the citizens of Ward One in our area.
Good timing, thank you. Let's see, let's go to Nana again.
Nope.
I'm sorry. We want to go Susan. What is the role of the council person, Ward One, in fostering collaboration with the municipal neighbors?
It's a very important role that, that we take seriously, because our ward wraps around our other sister communities of Bethany, War Acres, Piedmont, and Yukon. We need to have a collaborative relationship, because our problems are their problems. They have food insecurity, they have homelessness, they have drug and substance abuse. So if we can be a collaborative partner, working together with these communities, we will solve issues that affect all of us all the time, and we can use each other's resources and bounce ideas off and work as a team.
Thank you, Susan. Let's see, I think we want to go left again, no? Yeah, Nana, you're back up. What is the role of this council person, Ward One, in fostering collaboration with these municipal neighbors that we have many of?
Right. I think it's a very important role for the Ward One council member to be able to foster these relationships. For example, with me, I live, again, on this side of the ward, and I can look over, I'm on the intersection of 16th and Rockwell, and I can just look right over to the other side, and it's Bethany. And we pretty much share the same community, we go to the same stores. It's not like these labels or titles or these invisible barriers prevent that from happening. So I think it's very important that we reach out to the surrounding areas, because they are taking care, well, I say they're taking care, but they are the ones, they are us, they are people of Ward One. They're the people that we go to store with, they're the people that we, we go to school with. And so I think it's important to make sure that they get the resources, or that they're accounted for, so they can get the resources unnecessarily to live their daily lives. So it's very important for a council member to be able to foster.
Thank you, Nana. Let's go to Joshua, and you tell us what you believe the council person should be doing in fostering collaboration with municipal neighbors?
Absolutely. You know, so as a business person, building relationships is something that, you know, that you have to do. And I think anybody else here who owns a business or, you know, works in one, understands the relationships are the cornerstone of anything that you do. You know, through my company, I have the opportunity to work with other local business owners throughout Oklahoma, throughout the United States, and even into Canada. And so building strong, lasting relationships are something that's extremely. And so building strong, lasting relationships are something that's extremely important and that I have a great ability to do. I think doing that with the communities that surround us, all within Ward 1 and all across Oklahoma City are going to be extremely important to do that. I've been an ambassador and a volunteer for the Greater Oklahoma City Chamber for coming up on seven years now. That's given me a great opportunity over that time to make a lot of great relationships with city leaders and foster those. And I want to continue to do that as a city council person.
Okay, thank you, Joshua. Let's go to Bill Fleming. Bill, fostering collaboration with municipal neighbors?
Without a doubt, that has to be a priority for everyone in Oklahoma City that's involved in interacting with those city governments. Existing contracts and agreements are in place for a number of things already. There has to be a lot of cooperation. If Oklahoma City improves the street and runs it right up to the city limits of another city, and they haven't improved it and it next down to two lanes, it's a great problem. And so there has to be a lot of interaction, a lot of work there. And that means that you have to get to know people at a personal level because those things are done by agreement, not by mandate.
Thank you, Bill. Let's go to Richard Buchanan.
I agree, we have to have a personal relationship and cooperation with the city managers, the mayors, and the city council members there in Piedmont, Yukon, Surry Hills area, for instance. And I don't think they can be a forgotten area just because they're not in the county. But I think we also have to have cooperation and with the county officials, both Oklahoma County as well as, as Canadian County. I remember years ago when my father was a county commissioner here in Oklahoma County, that Councilman Jim Scott called in and said, "There's not enough funding for one of our big parks that we have. Is there anything that we can do or trade to make something happen?" So he was able to divert his funds back to the park, and the county went ahead and paved that road and did that work. And so I think you need that kind of cooperation. You can't have it without getting involved with the folks.
Very good point. Thank you, Richard. Let's go to Bradley, Bradley Carter. Collaboration with municipal neighbors?
I think it's very important, and it's something that I already do, just in our normal business as it is right now. I've been fortunate to have good friendships and even endorsements with some of the state representatives that mirror all of these. There are Jay Steagall, Marilyn Star, Denise Crosswhite-Hader, and I've been working with Mark Hader and already talking to him about some of the things that we could possibly do to already help the roads out in the Surry Hills area, north Yukon, west Piedmont, excuse me, east Piedmont area. So being able to build on those relationships that we've already garnered, I think is going to be something that is not only important but vital in what we do.
Okay, thank you, Bradley. Shay?
Well, every day I take my children from Oklahoma City through War Acres into Bethany to drop them off at school. So I can see that we are already working with those municipalities to make that transition easy for us. I fly right down, or pardon me, MacArthur, right into Bethany, and it's been a very good transition already. Also, during my time on the traffic commission, I routinely drive around our Ward 1 to see the new projects that were put in front of our desk, and I see already the city and the counties doing that work. I want to make sure that continues so the citizens of Oklahoma City don't see any issues.
All right, thank you, Shay. Question number seven is next.
Okay. By the way, a lifetime ago, I lived in Surry Hills. It was very confusing. Piedmont schools, Oklahoma City fire, a different county, I didn't know where I was. Anyway, but it was a great place.
Different postal address, too.
Look at your trash can, right?
Exactly, for sure. And I could always drop a ball on number 13 and just go. Anyway, okay. Question seven. All of you have 60 seconds to answer, what is your view of managing the demands of Oklahoma City's growth patterns and sprawl and the resulting demands on city services? Let's think about that. We are sprawling. A lot of its sprawl has been to the south. If you think about it, and home builders would know this, sprawl and the demands on city services. And we'll start, I believe, with Nana Dunklaw.
Yeah, it's good, of course, to see that the city is growing. That's something that I've always wanted to see happen. But that's a positive thing. However, with that, it creates problems. Consider, and usually transportation problems is what I see on the south side here of Ward 1. You need, again, like I said, you need some more bus stops, things like that to be able to accommodate the population here, to give some more thought to others. So people who live on, who live here can access to their medical facilities, go pick up prescription drugs and things like that. So I do think that the, it presents an issue as far as transportation goes. I think that it also presents an issue as far as representation and things of that nature because, I may not should look at that, but I would say that in order for us to keep up with this man, this world, we're going to have to expand economically. Well, thank you.
Okay, Susan?
Well, for the city sprawl and how we're growing, we need to address the traffic issues. I think we also need to look at investing in electric vehicles. We need to improve our transit system, and we need to beef up police and first responders to handle all of these things that are happening and to focus on managing a city that runs well.
Okay. Jay, we still don't have our limbs picked up. We don't live that far out. Okay, Jay, fix my limb problem. How are you going to handle city sprawl and city services?
I've got a chainsaw. I can come up with a solution if you need to, but, you know, I think that, you know, what a good problem to have. I mean, it's growth, right? It's growth within our city. I think that we need to take a critical look at the way that we charge fees to businesses and development. If you look at Oklahoma City, we need to be, we need a place, be a place that you want to do business, that you want to build a business, that you want to develop a commercial property. That helps grow, grow our revenues, which then include, gives us the ability and the funding to provide efficient services out to the sprawling locations. So, I mean, I would take a critical look and make sure that Oklahoma City is a place that people want to start a business in, honestly. If they can go to Yukon, or if they can go to Mustang, or if they can go to War Acres or Bethany and, and start a business there because it's less red tape, or it's easier, or there's more incentives, that's a problem. And we need to make sure that Oklahoma City is on a path and, is on a path and in a position to where we can, we can continue to promote economic development and growth. And honestly, that's because that'll help us provide the services out to the sprawling locations. Sorry, thank you.
Okay. Okay, Shay?
Well, I remember when Oklahoma City was really just a big town. Now it's a bustling city. It's a big league city, and it's from that growth. So I encourage more growth because we grow organically. When more people show up, more businesses have to come in. That's going to provide a bigger tax base for us to increase our police and fire services and other city services that will help us grow in a safe and proper manner.
Bradley? City sprawl and city services?
Yeah, it boils back down to the infrastructure. It boils down to our roads, our first responders, the police. I mean, we're cutting, we're trying to cut stuff. Our firefighters are hurting right now. We don't have enough houses open. We're not expanding that, we're just kind of moving them around. They need a lot more support. The roads themselves need to be redone or paved or widened. We have no actual infrastructure when it comes to that. I live out in Surry Hills, and they approved over 1,600 more homes, but we have done nothing to our roads to help that. We put in a new school, but yet it's congested every day with people taking their kids to and from school. We have no, no plan in this, but yet we're still allowing to grow. So I think we need to take a step back and really reevaluate a lot of what we're doing to help support this type of growth that we've got going.
Okay, Bradley, thank you. Mr. Buchanan?
Well, I'm not sure why we have so much land added or whatever it's called in these areas like Moore, Yukon, Piedmont, what have you, because I know it's putting a strain on Oklahoma City. What we're going to be doing is we're going to be looking at additional wastewater plants because of it. We're going to have record year of home building once again. We've had a problem with, with available lots. And the developmental department, which are hardworking people, they seem understaffed. I don't know. But I know it's, it's, they always have their hands full. So I think we need to assist our builders and developers through streamlined processing. I know, I talked to one developer, he said he can't even submit his plans online and then have a, a order of when things are, are updated. And I just think there's, there's a lot of work in that area.
Bill Fleming?
One of our greatest assets is the amount of land that we have. It also poses one of the greatest problems because we have miles and miles and miles of streets and infrastructure to support. And as we continue to grow, and I'm a strong advocate of growth, that's what makes Oklahoma City really great, is we're able to grow and continue to bring people in, and that helps everything. It helps our tax base, it helps the city overall. But we have to be able to develop that infrastructure to accommodate that growth. Building fees, impact fees and things of those help, but ultimately, it's our sales tax base that's going to have to be increased in order to have the money to do the things we need to do. And that means that as these new stores go up in Oklahoma City, new developments go up, sales tax revenue will go up. And I know there's some issues at City Hall right now. Most of that's from COVID. They've just had their hands full trying to manage that and get the job done. I've built several building permits over the last year, and basically, it's not been a bad experience at all for me.
Joshua, your vote?
Yeah, you know, not being a native Oklahoman, I think I have a very unique perspective and, you know, even sometimes a greater appreciation for everything that we have in Oklahoma and not wanting to lose that. You know, growth and development are something that's incredibly important for any city and any community. I think the problem is we need to take a step back and realize that we are still facing a huge crisis right now. You know, we have small businesses that are, have either failed or are on the verge of failing. We have Oklahomans who are wondering whether they're going to be able to make their mortgage payment or lose their house, or, or folks who are going to not be able to feed their family. I think we need to take a step back and ensure that the, the growth that we have gotten up to this point, the businesses that we currently have, to ensure that they're going to stay in business and they're going to be around that next year and continue before we can even put, continue to put that bigger focus on the growth and development coming new, or we're just going to be replacing businesses that we've lost.
Okay, thank you. Your turn. What's your take?
All right. I believe we're up to question number eight. What is something about Oklahoma City government that you would change and why? Let's go back over here to Bradley Carter.
That's a good question.
What is something about Oklahoma City government that you would change and why?
I don't know that I have an answer for that. I haven't been involved in it enough to watch it, and I think it'd be a real naive comment to jump in there and start thinking that I'm going to be able to make changes right away. I think there's a lot that needs to be evaluated, and there's a whole lot more working together than it is just trying to go in and change things right away.
Fair enough. Shay?
Right now, our city council is made up of us, city councilmen, and our mayor. We are a lot ceremony positions and don't have a lot of power to do some things. We're giving a lot of power to our, to our city manager and some of the city managers. I think some adjusting of that may be warranted, just so we get more voices on some of the bigger decisions that are made.
Okay, Jay?
I think our city has done good over the last 30 or 40 years in the way that it's set up. I wouldn't see any big change. I think that the biggest change for me would be, be bringing, bringing a relationship building to it and the togetherness. I mean, again, I think we need to build bridges. We need to come together as each city council member and a mayor and work together for our citizens and stop the bickering and, and really try to represent the people of Oklahoma City and continuing its success and development for future growth.
Okay, and Susan?
I think our city government could take some more time in looking at best practices. I would like to see budget allocation to include a better focus on homelessness and a community living center. We need budget accountability, and I believe in the Share a Brain program, and if we can get good ideas from other places, we need to do that.
Okay, and I want to bring something up right now. I keep thinking about what you all might think about the changes that have been made to the Oklahoma City charter in the election, this past election. I'll ask you about that later. Let's go ahead and continue with our discussion about, is there something that Oklahoma City government that you would change and why?
I think that I would change the anti-panhandling ordinance to, I would have changed them pursuing that. I think that the city council vote to appeal the anti-panhandling decision costs our taxpayers time, money, and it also costs our taxpayers dignity. I also think that criminalizing poverty and homelessness is, while also increasing the barriers for help for our most vulnerable citizens is unacceptable. And I would just say, if I were to have the opportunity to have voted that day for the city council, it would have turned out different. Thank you.
Okay, let's go to Richard.
No, how about Joshua?
Oh, okay. Well, I was going to go back and forth here. Go ahead, Joshua.
You're good. Yeah, you know, I would kind of echo a little bit, you know, about what Mr. Carter said. I think it would be, you know, somewhat irresponsible of me to, to necessarily recommend a change at this point until I was there to have a better understanding of the functionality. However, what I would say is that I believe every city council person has a responsibility and a duty to better listen to what Oklahomans' voices are truly saying, and not only within the ward, but throughout the entire metro. The decisions that we make as city council people affect everyone.
Okay, thank you. Bill?
Because of the nature of the way that our city's run, our city manager pretty much has control of day-to-day activities, and of course, that individual is employed by, by the mayor and the city council. But I would say that within that organizational structure, there probably some things could be changed and updated, and I just have to look at those individually. Any overlapping services where we can save money, I certainly want to take a look at if there are any. By and large, I think our, our city does a really good job. This is a large, large city with a huge budget, and you're never going to get everything perfectly right, so there's always going to be an opportunity for improvement. We just need to look at those areas where we can improve and do the very best we can to, to get there.
Okay. I got overruled, Richard. You can go ahead now.
Okay. I don't see one particular thing that I'd want to change right now, but I, I do know that we need to, we do need more cooperation from the city government with other, with other counties, other cities, and also know that we need to have updates of our technology in those areas, as I said earlier, about streamlining things to make things easier for economic development.
Okay.
Did you skip over anybody?
Did, I didn't skip anybody, did I? Okay. We have a question nine that's been submitted, and I, let's start back over here. Bradley, what is something you uniquely could bring to the Oklahoma City council?
I would say probably just the fact that I have many years of business experience. I know how to balance budgets, I know how to read the spreadsheets, I know how to listen to people, and I know how to work across lines to make sure that we understand how to work together, and I'm willing to compromise and get things done, as long as that compromise doesn't, you know, break our character or our morals.
Okay, thank you, Bradley. Shay?
Do you want these to be 30 seconds or 60 seconds?
All right, I'm sorry. Let's keep it to 30 seconds. Go ahead, Shay.
Availability and relationships. I already said earlier that how available I could be for this city. I think that's important for that person to be there, to make decisions, to be there for the citizens of Ward 1. I also think relationships are very important. We have to be able to work together and stop the bickering and let us progress as a city.
And Jay, what can you uniquely bring to the Oklahoma City council?
Sure. I mean, I believe I'm the only one up here who currently serves the citizens of Oklahoma City in public office. I'd like to continue to do that. I've got a track record of being accountable to the voter. And in addition to that, through my personal and my professional career, I work on best practices all over the country with large health systems to try to streamline their laboratory services and provide technology solutions to deliver support.
Susan?
30 years of military leadership experience, worldwide travel across the planet, and my experience lobbying on Capitol Hill and being an advocate for patients and people.
Okay, thank you. Nana?
Yeah, I think that what I would bring is my diverse background. I have a diverse background, like I've said before, in the fields of business, law, healthcare and banking. I also, on a personal level and educational level, I think I've been able to witness education I also, on a personal level and educational level, I think I've been able to witness education in Oklahoma from a unique background. I mean, of course, K through 12, and then I've also got my associates, my masters, and then also my JD. And I've been able to witness different walks of life, I guess, in that regard and see people at different levels. My background is.
Okay. Joshua?
You know, I'm not a politician, and, you know, until recently, I didn't really, you know, seek to even get involved, you know, in government in any way. Once again, I felt it was, you know, the duty as an Oklahoman and the responsibility to do so. And so I feel like that what I can bring is, my brother and I built our company, you know, out of, from a spare bedroom into what it is today. I know how to build relationships, I know how to bring people together, and I know how to lead, and I believe I can bring that to the council.
Okay. Bill, what do you uniquely bring to the Oklahoma City Council?
I believe I have a proven track record of being able to accomplish things, working with people. I gave the experience with MAPS 3 with the Dole Wellness Center. We wrote that program, submitted it, were able to nurture it through and get it to fruition. I chaired the strategic planning team where I go to church, and I worked with a lot of different groups of people and have a proven record of being able to get things done.
And you, Richard?
Well, I think the 40 years of being in business for myself probably is the biggest asset. I started with nothing, through a hard time, but with good times. I just now, we've done a record amount of homes. I have other companies. I think freedom of time, and my friends kid me about being born in May, that I'm a bit of a bull. I get things done, and I love to dig into things.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you all.
Those are almost like closing statements. Are we ready for closing statements? I believe so. Okay, closing statements, which is a lot like you just talked about. 30 seconds each, and let's start over here. Richard?
Well, I'm a huge advocate of growth. I think we need to continue what, to build on maps, to build on the other, other places like the river, the Innovative District, the Indian Cultural Center, what have you. I think we need more economic development. That's going to have a lot to do with infrastructure, and I support our small businesses. We need to be very aware of them hurting, and I support our citizens, and the decisions we make will dictate how our children, our city futures look like.
Perfect. Mr. Fleming, 30 seconds.
I want to thank you again for the opportunity to be here today, and I want to thank every citizen of Oklahoma City who's going to go out and vote. It's really important, and I hope that everyone does that. A lot of good candidates here. It's going to be a tough decision for the voters, and I would just ask that you would prayerfully consider who you vote for, and that when you go to vote on the ninth, that you would vote for me. I will work tirelessly to accomplish your objectives.
Okay, thank you. Joshua DeBolt?
30 seconds just isn't enough time to sum it all up, so I would just say that, you know, my faith in God and my love for Oklahoma are the things that are driving me to want to be a city councilperson. And I hope that anyone who takes the time to listen to what I want to do for Oklahoma can see that. So I would say, you know, go to votedebolt.com, check it out. My door is always open. Come by and talk to me anytime.
Okay. Thank you. Nana Danklaw?
Yes. I'll just want to reiterate what I said at the beginning, go over my platform. I'm here for, my platform consists of public safety, economic development, more sidewalks, bus stops, and bike lanes, and also call for more diversity and a continued commitment to diversity and inclusiveness for our city. And as I continue going towards this February 9 election date, I just, I'll continue listening to your hopes, dreams, and concerns for our city, and I intend to take your hopes, dreams, and concerns with me to the Oklahoma City Council to begin addressing them on day one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Purici, Lieutenant Colonel.
Well, I'm not a quitter. Yes, I'm the underdog. It was even suggested that I drop out because of my age and slow beginning. But I want my neighbors in Ward 1 to know that I hear them and I see them, and I'm going to do more than talk about my energy. All my life, I've been a problem solver, seeking solutions, not blame. So I'm not going to negatively exploit my opponent's youth, but I'm going to use my age, my experience, my competency and expertise to be a member of a team guiding Oklahoma City into the future.
I heard Ronald Reagan in there.
Yes, you did.
Yeah, I did.
Yes, you did.
Jay Sherrill, closing statement.
Sure. I think I have a track record of public service. I am, I am endorsed by former Mayor Mick Cornet. I've also been endorsed by the Oklahoma City Commercial Developers Association. I care about our city, and I want to continue to make sure it's represented, and we focus on public safety, priorities and infrastructure, and economic development and growth. Again, you can find out more about me on my website, jforokc.com. Thank you, and I appreciate your consideration to vote on February 9.
Okay. And Shay?
This election is about Oklahoma City and its citizens. I'm going to ask you to please do your research, communicate with me, or whatever you need to know, to figure out what candidate is best representative of your vision of Oklahoma City. I think the choice will be clear that it's going to be Shay Varnell, and with that, I humbly ask for your vote on February 9.
Okay. Finally, Bradley Carter, your closing statement.
I just want to thank you guys and the candidates that are up here. I have this opportunity today to talk. I hope that we've been able to answer a lot of your questions. You know, it's very clear that you've got a lot of good choices. So please feel free to go to Carter, the number four, Oklahoma.com. You can look up every platform that I stand for and what I will be fighting for you on, and I hope that I have the opportunity to earn your vote. You can email me, or you can call me, text me, and I will respond as quickly as I can. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. On behalf of Mr. Palmer and myself, thank you for the privilege of being here today, and we'll turn it back over to Robin Jones.
Thanks for running.
Yes.
Thank you so much. In fact, even though we're a small group, let's applaud.
Yay!
Special thanks to those who are videotaping this. It will be very valuable. I don't have a microphone, sorry.